It's 4:30.
Call this meeting order. Please stand and join me in the pleasure of the evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you join me in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Turn your cell phones and papers and devices down, please. Item number one, do we have any citizen concerns? Hearing none. Can I give a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Move approval of the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Pass this five to zero. Items three through nine constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member.
Item three, approval of the minutes of the June 26, 2018, meeting and minutes of the special meeting on July 2, 2018. Four, approval of claims. Item five, board administration. A, approval of lifting tax suspension for petitioners who failed to recertify their income or income does not qualify for continued tax suspension. Item B, approval of resolution to approve petition for suspension of taxes through the redemption process for initials C-H. C, approval of reappointments to the Civil Service Commission, Library Board of Trustees, and the Veteran Affairs Commission. Item six, communications center. Approval of resolution fixing date for a public hearing for a Senate to a First Amendment to a current tower lease. Item seven is county auditor, receive auditor's quarterly report. Item eight, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. Item B, authorization to initiate hiring process. Item nine is secondary roads, consideration of a permit for use of the county right-of-way for an underground utility. Are there any questions on any individual consent items? I will move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Pass this five to zero. We're a couple of minutes ahead of our set time for property sale hearing. So item 11 is presentation of resolution thanking and commending Richard Ellison for his years of service with Woodbury County. Mr. Ellison, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Woodbury County, Iowa, resolution number 12,752, a resolution thanking and commending Richard Ellison for his service to Woodbury County. Whereas Richard Ellison has capably served Woodbury County as an employee to the sheriff's office for 28 years from February 28, 1990 to June 15, 2018, and whereas the service given by Richard Ellison as a Woodbury County employee has been characterized by his dedication to the best interests of the citizens of Woodbury County, and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Woodbury County, Iowa, that the underside members of this board thanks and commends Richard Ellison for his years of service to Woodbury County, and be it further resolved that it is the wish of those signing below that the future hold only the best for this very deserving person, Richard Ellison. Be it solely resolved this 26th day of June, 2018. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck in the future.
Thank you to all of you.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. You gonna say something?
It's been quite an afternoon. I want to thank Woodbury County for allowing me to serve the people of this county. It's been quite an adventure. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have time for number 12? He's not here.
He clearly looked like family members there.
We will withhold number 12 until our set time. 4:35, board administration. Public hearing and sale of property parcel ending in 006, also known as 8:15 Pier Street. The public hearing is now open. Is there anybody willing to speak for or against the sale of this property?
Hearing none, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion by Young, second by Taylor to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Pass this five to zero. Is there anybody in the audience interested in purchasing this property? The bidding is now open.
Come on up to the microphone.
Can you tell us your name and address, please?
Brad Cummings. And my address here in town's 507 Seventh Street, Suite 600.
And you have an opening bid?
Yes, opening bid for the minimum, or the $20,112.
Okay. Is there anybody else interested in bidding on this property? Going once? Going twice? I move that we sell the property to Mr. Cummings for $20,112.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Young for the property sale. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Pass this five to zero. Thank you, and Heather will take care of you. Do I need to read this for Mr. McGrory?
Oh, she's gonna try to reschedule if she can.
Okay. Then we'll withhold on that. Do I have any opposition?
You're gonna do it another time?
Maybe.
Item 12 for...
Is this the second time we've had it on the agenda? No?
Well, we could delete it then off the agenda, huh?
I would move we delete it from today's agenda and try to reschedule if possible.
Second.
Motion by Potabom, second by Raddick to reschedule item 12 for the resolution thanking the employee for his service. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Pass this five to zero. Item 13, Human Resources. Approval of request for a waiver for special circumstances regarding compensatory time payout according to the Juvenile Detention Bargaining Agreement.
Hi, Melissa Thomas, Human Resources Director. I received a request from employee for juvenile detention to not pay out her comp time according to the contract. She does qualify for FMLA, so it is extenuating circumstances. And with her time off, then she would just like to be paid with a comp time instead of having it paid out on her check.
Is this... You said this a special circumstance but not completely unheard of, or...
It is a special circumstance, but it's written right there in the contract that they can ask for this allowance. So she did it the right way.
So this is... Okay, that was my next question. This is the right way to do it and we're not stepping on any...
No toes.
Okay.
I'll move 13.
Second.
Motion by Potabom, second by Raddick to approve a request for waiver for special circumstances. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Pass this five to zero. Thank you, Melissa. Item 14, Building Services. Kenny Schmitz, Trosper Hoyt and LEC HVAC study results. This is an information item.
Kenny Schmitz, Building Services Director. We completed a HVAC study of the Trosper Hoyt and the LEC buildings with Resource Consulting Engineers. And I have Corey Metzger here this evening to present the findings of both of those buildings. If you'd like to step up, I'll let you take over. Thank you.
Thanks, Kenny. Corey Metzger, Resource Consulting Engineers. I'm gonna go through two studies tonight. I will try to keep it relatively brief, although there's a lot of information to cover. Please don't hesitate to interrupt me if it's helpful. If I'm going too deep, let me know. I can certainly try to be a little more brief. So we're gonna start with covering Trosper Hoyt. I will walk through what's covered in the executive summary. I'm happy to go into the body of the report in more detail if that's helpful, but again, wanna be respectful of everyone's time, so... Assume everyone's fairly familiar with the Trosper Hoyt building. You've got a number of important county services in that facility. The building, mechanical systems have a range of ages and conditions. And given the different uses in the space, different needs, and different levels of importance on the reliability and operations of those systems, so... Key items to be aware of, you've got a chilled water system that serves the building. It's a water-cooled system. That system rejects heat to water that's pulled from an aquifer beneath the building. So you've got a well that pumps up from the aquifer. That well water is run through the condenser side of the chiller. There's a mixing valve that'll cycle the amount of water that's actually pulled at any given time to maintain the proper temperature going into the chiller. But once that water's been used, it's dumped to the storm drain. So it's discharged. So you've got a once-through type system for condenser water there. Chilled water is then distributed throughout the building to all the air handlers. There are a few smaller loads that are served as well. You also have a steam boiler that serves the building. So there's a single chiller, single pump on the chilled water side, single pump on the condenser water side for that building. You have a single steam boiler in the building with a single condensate return unit. On the steam side, so the building shares a wall with CenturyLink building, and your chiller and boiler are actually in the basement of the CenturyLink side of the building. So the steam boiler is tied into, through a common header, the CenturyLink boiler, but the two are isolated. Two systems are isolated from one another. So in an emergency situation, if you had a failure, there is potential that you could back up, be backed up from the CenturyLink boiler, or if they had a failure, you could help back up their boiler. But you don't have direct redundancy with your systems. So those are the two main sources for cooling and heating for the building. Throughout the building, then, you've got air handling units on each floor. The first floor has two units that serve spaces. One unit, a larger unit, serves the north and central portion of the floor. The smaller unit serves the south portion of the floor. The second floor and third floor each have a single air handling unit. And then the fourth floor has two air handling units again. On the first through third floors, you're using variable air volume, air handling units. So there are terminal units, VAV boxes, or supply air terminals that are fed from the air handlers. Those typically have reheat coils that are used to control temperature within a zone. On the fourth floor, you have two units that were formerly both multi-zone units. A multi-zone unit's a constant volume unit that has a hot deck and a cold deck, and it has a mixing damper for each zone. So it takes hot air and cold air and mixes them all the time to try to maintain temperature in a space. One of those units was modified in 2004 to be a variation on that system that includes only a single damper for five zones, which covers most of the juvenile detention areas. There are reheat coils then in some of the areas fed by that, or in three of the zones fed by that unit. There are a number of comfort issues related to that particular unit. So there are some comfort issues throughout the building. One of the other factors to look at is controls. So as I believe you're aware of, there is a controls upgrade project going on in the building right now. That project is replacing the front end in the building and upgrading the controls on the air handlers and major pieces of equipment. But you still have a significant amount of equipment in that building that's controlled by pneumatic controls. So typically, terminal heating and cooling devices, perimeter heat, a number of the VAV boxes use pneumatic controls. So we don't have a central point for monitoring, trending, diagnosing issues with those components or systems. So with that highlight of building systems, the current issues that we see are the lack of redundancy with your steam system. As I mentioned, there is potential redundancy with the CenturyLink boiler, but you don't have redundancy with your systems. There's a lack of redundancy with the chilled water system. Not as concerned about the lack of redundancy with the chiller as I am with the lack of redundancy on pumps, that system. And we'll get into each of those in a little more detail. The condenser water source for the chilled water system. We've received some anecdotal information that appears that the aquifer has significant capacity left in it, but we don't have any detailed information on what the depth of the aquifer is, how many more years we can expect to operate the system under current...
That doesn't return the water back to the aquifer?
No, it discharges to storm. The multi-zone units are antiquated. That type of unit would not meet current energy codes. They serve fairly large zones, so there are inherent comfort issues with those large zones. And then the fact that you're operating a constant volume system and simultaneously heating and cooling. They can maintain comfort if applied correctly, but they use very significant amounts of energy for the heating and cooling that they provide. Two of the units, two of the air, or both of the air handling units on the first floor and the remaining multi-zone unit on the fourth floor are, appear to be either original to the building or close. We don't have exact ages on them, but 1970s or older. So they've significantly exceeded their expected useful life. On your variable air volume systems, they typically don't provide adequate ventilation per today's codes. We haven't identified any specific indoor air quality issues, but with the way the systems are designed and modern codes, they would not comply. There are some zoning issues. As I mentioned, a significant consideration is the multi-zone units, although there are some other zoning issues with the variable air volume systems on the first through third floors. Smaller, I would consider this one a more minor issue, but there are some restrooms on the exterior walls that don't have heating in them and may not have adequate exhaust to maintain comfortable conditions year-round. We're not concerned about freezing at this point or that sort of thing, but like to see restrooms maintained at comfortable levels if possible. So those are the current issues that we've identified. A couple of items to look at moving down the road. The second and third floor air handling units are each around 20 to 25 years old. We expect 25 to 30 years as a baseline for what those units should last. So they're nearing their expected useful life. They haven't exceeded them, exceeded those lives at this point. And then I mentioned the pneumatic control components for a number of the terminal heating, primarily heating devices, but heating and cooling devices. Based on that information, there are some recommendations that we've put together. So what we would recommend for immediate implementation, the one item that's, it's a very small item, but we reviewed it with Kenny, and his plan to be added to the preventive maintenance schedule would be to exercise that valve that isolates the CenturyLink boiler from your boiler to make sure that if there is a condition where you need to open that up and share that header, you don't walk in and find that the valve's been closed for 15 years and is locked closed. So that'll be added, and it's something that can be done quarterly or twice a year, just to make sure that that valve is reliable. So if it's needed, it can be used. No cost to that, no major issue, just something that, an insurance policy for down the road. We've discussed and suggested a study to verify the capacity of that aquifer that is providing the condenser water for the building, just to make sure that there are years' worth of water to come there. We don't... Frankly, my biggest concern, and again, we've received anecdotal evidence that that shouldn't be an issue, but one of my biggest concerns with the building is that if you ever, if that aquifer level drops below your well, you have no cooling available for the building. And there's not a quick solution for that. It's not something that you can bring a truck in. You might be able to get a cooling tower in within a few weeks on the back of a semi, but you're probably talking tens of thousands of dollars per month.
How do you monitor that, Corey? Currently, or what are the capabilities of monitoring the water levels?
I don't know of any capabilities of monitoring that at this point.
I don't know of any capabilities as well. We do have some discussions and meetings with the DNR. I'll bring it up at one of our next meetings and see if they can provide me any information on that. That might be of some help.
Do you think something out there would exist to be able to know if you're going to be in a situation where you have no cooling capacity, right?
Yeah. I think the issue is, there are some other buildings in the city that use this type of system, but it used to be numerous buildings, and I think you're down to four or five in the area as opposed to what was tens in the past. So there aren't as many facilities using it. You know, it's not a typical usage for something like that. So the DNR is not gonna monitor it to make sure that you've got cooling capacity. They're looking at it from a drinking water perspective.
They currently make us monitor our usage in and out of that aquifer. We have to chemically treat the water that comes out before it's dumped. And that's their major concern, is that we're not affecting that aquifer. To answer your question earlier, does that go back into the aquifer? No, it certainly does not. And I do know that they've recently, within the last three weeks, shown a special interest in trying to find out all the buildings that are pulling from that aquifer, because they currently simply don't know themselves. There have probably been some that have been for years, and before recording, they were aware of those, who those were, but they're trying to identify.
Do we have any records of measurements taken in the past?
I don't have any records, anything on it.
We'd just like to make sure that you've got plenty of time to deal with it if there are issues coming down the road. And it may be something that hasn't a definite supply.
I wish you wouldn't have said that. I wish you wouldn't have said that. Jinx it.
I would say it does, but...
Well, likely, yeah, it's still probably getting replenished at some point, but with less drawing off of it, so... Okay?
Okay. Okay, so those are the immediate items we'd recommend doing as soon as possible. For a one- to three-year implementation recommendation, we'd look at, if it's feasible, replacing the air handling units and systems serving the first floor, as well as the air handling units and systems serving the fourth floor. So the first floor units, as I mentioned, have both significantly exceeded their expected useful lives. There are some issues with the systems. You've got pneumatic controls still on some of the perimeter units serving that level. You've got some comfort issues. We've got some zoning issues that could be addressed. There are also some efficiency issues. And then there's the ventilation, the lack of adequate ventilation per current codes for those units. So ideally, as soon as it's feasible, we'd recommend, and it doesn't have to be tomorrow, but when it's feasible, we'd recommend replacing those units. You can see there are some, if you go back to the body of the report, we've put some small pictures of each of the air handlers in there that can kind of give you an idea of what the casings of each of the units look like on the exterior. If you ever want to do a field trip, I'd be happy to walk you through the building, but... So the first floor would be in that one- to three-year range if it's feasible. And then the fourth floor, you've got one unit that's as old as anything in the building. That's what we've tagged as air handling unit 474-2. That's the existing multi-zone unit that serves the south side of the fourth floor. So not the juvenile detention area, but the offices, conference rooms, storage areas on that side of the building. And then the unit that serves the north side of the building is only 14 years old. The configuration that it's in is challenging. It is, both of those units are extremely inefficient from an energy perspective. The unit that serves the north side of the building presents significant challenges in maintaining comfort, given that you're either cooling or heating all of the spaces. If you're in cooling, the reheat coils for three of the zones can help to temper those zones. But if you're in heating and any of the zones need cooling, there's nothing that can be done with that system as it's currently configured.
Say that last part again, please. If you're in heating, there's nothing that can be done?
Right, if that unit has gone into heating, so it's sending heating to all five of those zones. If one or two of those zones starts asking for cooling, they can't have it, because the unit is only sending heating. It's only sending hot air out. The way that it was, and I'm not privy to the decisions that were made in 2004 when it was replaced, but there is a single pair of dampers, and they're on a single actuator, that either let hot air or cold air into the supply ducts coming out of the unit. So it still has a hot deck, cold deck configuration, meaning that there's a hot, excuse me, a heating coil and a cooling coil that are in parallel. Downstream of those, there are dampers that let air into the supply duct. So on a typical multi-zone unit, there'd be a pair of dampers at each one of the connections to the system, or each zone connection.
But you only have one of these?
This one has a single damper that runs underneath all five of the zone connections to the unit. And so there are a few challenges that presents. And one of the major challenges with that unit in general is that anything you do with that unit is gonna... If you shut that unit down, you lose conditioning to the entire juvenile detention area of the building. So implementation of changes to that unit is going to require some planning, whether it be one to three years or 10 years from now. Whenever it's done, there will be challenges, because even replacing just that damper and trying to go back to a multi-zone operation, which I wouldn't recommend. I think that's taking you the wrong direction. But if you were to do that, you're probably still talking a week's worth of downtime potentially in a 24/7 facility. You might be able to have a contractor work 24/7 and get it done in two or three days, but two or three days of no conditioning is a problem. And those aren't spaces that you can bring in portable conditioning units to handle. So there are challenges logistically that I probably can't answer for you on how you would implement changes to that unit, but it's one that, I don't think there are simple modifications to that unit that can address what we're looking at, if that makes sense. So those would be recommended in one to three years. And then occasionally, I don't recommend fixing everything right now. I'd like to have that down for the record. So for second and third floor, we'd be looking at about a 10-year window to consider replacing those units. That would get them out to the end of their expected useful lives. Would give you an opportunity to have some time to plan for that. One of our recommendations, when you replace each of the air handling units, if you look through the body of the study, is to replace the heating coils. So currently, you have steam heating coils in the air handlers, but hot water to the rest of the building. You've got steam to hot water heat exchangers that provide hot water to all your terminal heating devices. We would recommend converting to hot water and adding energy recovery to those air handlers when they're replaced. By doing that, you can prepare yourself down the road to convert the building over to having hot water boilers instead of steam, which should simplify some things in the future. future. So at that 10-year timeframe, we'd look at the second and third floor, doing those either individually or in unison. You'll see in the costs that we identified, we think there's probably some economy of scale in doing both floors together, if it can be done in a way that gives contractors adequate working conditions. But again, not as critical as what you'd see in the juvenile detention area, but anything that we do on any of these floors is going to interrupt conditioning to those, to the entire floor. So there's likely relocation of staff or some other temporary condition that's got to be dealt with for implementation of any of these recommended projects.
Is $250,000 for replacing the steam with hot water, is that a total cost, or is that just partial? And then the follow-on is, did we have, did we or did we not treat steam traps here before?
Yep.
And is there enough of a bang for the buck as far as energy savings, or is that something that doing it now versus 10 to 15 years from now would make sense? Or it's, I know that's three questions in one, but-
Yeah, so let me see if I can answer those. We did do the steam trap service and replacement project throughout the Trosper Hoyt building. It was significantly less involved than the courthouse. I think we had around 30 traps at Trosper Hoyt, because we have significantly fewer devices using steam there, because we have the steam to hot water heat exchangers. So the $250,000 would include replacing the boiler and then some piping mains that would connect to the existing hot water distribution system. So you have, you have one steam to hot water heat exchanger that serves the first floor of the building only. That's in room 116. And then in 117, which is right next door, you have another steam to hot water heat exchanger that serves the second through fourth floors of the building. Based on what we've looked at, we believe if, I'm veering off just for a second here, but based on what we've looked at, we believe there's adequate capacity, that if we added energy recovery and modified the systems serving each floor, there's enough capacity in those steam to hot water heat exchangers to be able to serve the heating coils and the air handlers that we'd be looking at for those levels when we went through and replaced them. The efficiency, the potential efficiency improvement in going to hot water versus steam could be fairly significant. So peak efficiency on a steam boiler, a new steam boiler is something like 80%. An older steam boiler, that's going to drop as scale builds up and the heat transfer becomes less effective. On a new high-efficiency, high-efficiency condensing boiler, you're looking at well over 90% at its peak. I wouldn't, you'll see them advertised as 95% to 98%. I would say you're probably going to get 92%, 93% with how we would operate it, but there is potential to get a significant improvement from an energy perspective there. There's some pumping energy, too, that comes into play that you don't have with steam on the distribution side, but you're still going to see an improvement.
Do you think it's worth looking at, not waiting 10 to 15 years to do, or not really in the grand scheme of your-
So the challenge, the challenge that we look at is, if we haven't, if you haven't replaced your air handling units and the steam coils that are in those units, I don't think our piping distribution system's big enough to handle what we'd be looking at for loads right now. That's why we recommend, it's a great question. The reason we're recommending waiting until after the air handling units are done for the steam system is because of those loads that we're looking at at the coils right now with the current configurations of the units.
Thank you.
So once the unit configurations are changed, I think we can reuse existing piping and make that work. Any questions? That's Trosper Hoyt in a nutshell, if you will. I think that one, I think you've got some fairly good options. The real challenges in my mind there are going to be, obviously financing's always an issue, but then what you do with staff and building occupants as you try to implement these projects that are recommended when it's appropriate. If there aren't any questions, we can move on to the Law Enforcement Center. I'd like to point out, on the front cover of the Law Enforcement Center, you're going to see that it says preliminary. My goal tonight is to have, to present some information, but also to have a little bit of discussion, understanding that this is just being presented to you, but to share where we're at and how we've, how we've come to the point that we've reached. So again, I assume you're all familiar with the Law Enforcement Center across the street. Just going through mechanical systems again. That building has two gas-fired hot water boilers that are original to the building. It also has two air-cooled chillers, so that provide, those provide hot water heating for the building and then chilled water cooling for the building, for all systems in the building. There are five air handling units that serve the building. Air Handling Unit 1 is located on the first floor. It serves the entire first floor of the building, as well as the south portion of the second floor of the building. It is a variable air volume unit, has, I think, something in the range of 45 VAV boxes fed off of that unit. It's on the east side of the building, towards the north end. The other four air handling units are all located up at the roof level of the building in a mechanical room. So Air Handling Unit 1, as I mentioned, is variable volume. The other four units are all constant volume. There's one unit that serves the west side of the cell blocks. There's one unit that serves the east side of the cell blocks. The other two units serve the core of the building, providing conditioning to areas like the kitchen and other support spaces. So all of those units have hot water heating coils, chilled water cooling coils. I think that gives you a pretty good idea on air handlers. There are local exhaust fans throughout the building, providing exhaust to the spaces. There's no energy recovery at this point. It's a, frankly, the systems are fairly straightforward at the building. That being said, there are some significant challenges that face this building, I think more so than some of your other facilities, primarily due to the function of the building and the configuration of those existing systems. So if you look at the issues that we've identified under the executive summary, and we can certainly go through the body of this one if it's helpful, but there's a lack of redundancy for maintenance or replacement of equipment, a lack of redundancy in general for equipment, with the exception of the boilers and the chillers, which do have redundancy. But all of the air handlers are individual units. They're, none are manifoldled together. So when you shut a unit down, you shut off heating and cooling to the areas served by that unit. Additionally, they are installed in such a way that it's not feasible to put in replacement equipment without removing that equipment. So there are potentially significant interruptions to providing heating and cooling to the spaces served, associated with trying to replace any of those units. And that's true for all of the air handling units in the building, unfortunately. Compounding with that concern, all of the equipment that's in the building is, all the air handlers in the building are original. So they're now over 30 years old. They've met their expected useful lives. There are issues with a number of the units from an operational perspective. Some of those issues, we believe, will be addressed. So there's a similar controls upgrade project happening at the Law Enforcement Center. That should address some issues that have been observed with terminal heating control valves. However, it won't address some significant issues with existing equipment, such as inadequate airflow, lack of capacity in coils, that sort of thing. I should note that the intake project that was designed but hasn't been implemented yet did include the replacement of the heating and cooling coils in the supply fans for Air Handling Unit 1, which would, we believe, would provide a boost in capabilities for that unit. It currently has some issues providing adequate airflow during design conditions. So, but on the air side, the majority of the equipment in the building has met or exceeded its expected useful life. The boilers in the building, as I mentioned, are original. After some work that was done recently, I believe there was, there were some issues getting them back online. They were able to be brought back, but I think I would take that as an indicator that they probably don't have a lot of life left. So I would rank them as a high priority on replacements. Fortunately, on the boilers and chillers, they can be replaced one at a time with the existing unit left in place, providing heating or cooling for the building. So there is potential to, on those pieces of equipment, to not interrupt heating or cooling to the building. With respect to the constant volume air handling units, there are a few issues. Comfort is one of the issues that we're looking at. Energy efficiency is another. Typically, those units provide a reasonably high percentage of outside air, because there's a lot of exhaust in the cell areas, which is required and appropriate, but they don't have energy recovery right now, so you're bringing in a lot of outside air, conditioning it, and then exhausting it. Additionally, some of the configuration of the zoning and what is served by units could probably be improved. Some areas are served by common units that should probably be separated or segregated from one another. So there are a number of opportunities for improvement with those units, if that can be implemented. So Air Handling Unit 1 I mentioned has some issues with airflow. There are some issues with getting appropriate supply air temperatures on the cooling side. I think we can improve those with the work that was planned for the intake project. I would not consider that to be a long-term or permanent solution. I think it's a, you know, a bridge to a permanent solution. So I want to be clear about that. There are some duct configuration issues on the discharge of the air handler that we can't address without replacing the duct work, and doing that would cut supply air from the entire first floor and the south end of the second floor. So rather than do that, our intent was to try to do a limited shutdown and address it as best we could. Talked about the boiler. One of the chillers has had multiple compressor failures in the last few years. I think around $20,000 per compressor, if I'm not mistaken. So there have been a few expensive repairs on that single chiller. That would lead me to believe there's something, it's possible that you're unlucky. Normally, I would expect to be unlucky once, not twice. That would suggest to me that there may be some issues with that chiller that require further investigation. Another factor is, we believe those chillers are using refrigerant R22. I don't know if you remember our presentation on Siouxland District Health, but R22 is being phased out in 2020. So again, it's not that you have to have everything replaced by 2020, but we expect that that refrigerant will become more expensive, significantly more so the further you get past 2020. So having that in mind with that equipment as you move forward is probably wise. The last item that we've got, and this isn't directly a mechanical system, but it's something that we've looked at and I wanted to get documented in this report. You have an existing emergency generator. It's original to the building. It has a single automatic transfer switch, so current code requires two automatic transfer switches, one for emergency power and one for standby power. This one just has a single transfer switch for emergency power. So typically, emergency loads would be life safety loads. Standby loads would be things like maybe your walk-in freezer and cooler, that sort of thing, so that you make sure that the emergency loads are covered before you allow those secondary loads to be added to the system. There are some issues with the combustion, intake, and exhaust on that unit that could stand to be improved upon. Maybe opportunities, if there are more significant projects that happen within the building, to look at the generator and incorporate that in other work that happens. With all of that in mind, as we looked at this, tried to come up with ideas on how to implement changes to address the concerns that we've identified, and I've been dragging on for-
Quickly, thank you. Probably a month ago, for some reason, you guys lost power, or the court Allison was gone for a long time. The jail was, even though the jail had a generator, it was down heating and cooling system. So when the projects were done to tie the generator into things, the ventilation for the jail is not following what was, you know, some of the things, alarms and different things are not tied in or not backed up like everybody thought they would be. The generator did not keep that stuff running for ventilation, just so, just so you're aware of that also, and I just thought.
What was the maximum length of time that you were without, that you were on either standby or generator's power?
Well, sorry, I missed the first part.
How long was it on?
How long was it on with?
Oh, I bet you it was on five, probably about five hours. It was, we had four or five hours that morning, because Mid-American sent it back at 10 o'clock, and I think it was finally actually back on by 1:00 that day.
Okay. So we've been looking at ideas for how to implement improvements to the building. So my biggest concern, frankly, is there is no good way to replace any air handler in this building without cutting heating and cooling from the spaces that are served. And because of the way these air handlers are installed, there's no good way to do a quick replacement of any of them. I mean, a quick replacement is weeks to a month, not days. Air Handling Unit 1, for example, is more or less shoehorned into the room that it's in. There's not space to try to put something in next to it. There's really no way to take it out, you know, parts and pieces of it out and put something else in as you're doing that. It's just the way that it's configured, if you're going in for one-for-one replacements, there are extremely limited options, without saying we're going to vacate the areas served by that unit. That's true of units two through five as well. So if you take out Air Handling Unit 2, your west cell blocks are without conditioning. And again, much like juvenile detention, those cell block areas aren't places where you can put temporary heating and cooling devices. So there are some significant challenges associated with trying to replace that equipment. We looked at an idea of trying to put a penthouse above the existing mechanical room and putting all new equipment in there and only having to rework duct connections. We don't think the structure can support that, based on what was investigated with the first iteration of the intake project and some additional investigation that's been performed. There really aren't other spaces inside of the existing building without moving things around that would accommodate new pieces of equipment. So with that in mind, I think you have a few different options. One would be to say, okay, we're going to, the fact that we have to vacate the areas that we're serving while equipment is replaced. Air Handling Unit 1 is the major challenge there, because you're going to have to vacate the entire first floor of the building. So all of your court staff, sheriff's office would be without heating and cooling as long as that work is done. Certainly could be done, but you're talking about a fairly significant move of personnel and operations for an extended period of time. In addition to that, if you do a replacement of that unit, you're talking about going back in with something similar, which may or may not be the best option for the building moving forward. I think if we were designing the building today, I wouldn't suggest that VAV is the best option for the first floor of the building. I think there are probably some better options to get better efficiency, better indoor air quality, and potentially better reliability. So you could do that, and we could take a similar process through each of the other air handling units in the building. I think you're talking about significant logistical issues with relocating folks as that's done. And certainly, I'm open to any comments or questions on that. I'm not probably prepared to provide feedback on that. We have not approached the sheriff's office with this yet to talk through-
I was going to say, that may be the place to-
Yeah. Our plan is-
The next step, I should-
And that's why this is preliminary tonight and why we're, we've gotten through the technical issues with the equipment in the building. I don't have a good roadmap for you yet, because as we kept digging further and further, we can't just provide that roadmap in a vacuum. It's got to be something that takes input from all the interested parties. But a couple of other ideas that came up. One would be to look at, and I'm going to jump outside of my area of expertise here, but look at the potential of vacating the first floor of the building permanent, not permanently, but relocating the staff that's currently on the first floor of the building permanently, allowing for a full retrofit and architectural upgrade of that floor of the building, potentially allowing you to address some other issues related to certification of the jail. of the jail. So you could add space on that floor for holding areas, cells, I guess a number of different functions could potentially happen down there.
How do the plans or your thoughts of plans coincide with the reorganization of the jail's building that was put out by the architectures last year?
By GGA?
Yeah.
I think that the other plans generally work. I mean, there's some division of spaces and some other changes that are happening and changing.
So Kevin Ross of GGA was here today. So when Goldberg did their big study, we didn't talk to him, give him even the option of looking at what we could do with that space if there was no court there and if there wasn't a sheriff's office and transportation there. We could still put the intake there, but we could possibly now have a drive-in. We talked about this today. This is just talking out loud. Possibly then could utilize the rest of that space as a jail. You could have a salary port on the north end where you could actually drive in out of that parking lot because a bunch of the judges that park there wouldn't be there anymore because you put them someplace else. So it opened up some possibilities of different ways to look at this space because now there's way more space there without having the court in there. I think that answered what you were asking.
That's the challenges with the options we're looking at and why Corey started off this as preliminary. We've got to look into some other things like, of course, we have to speak to the jail personnel, the sheriff, get their thoughts. We'd also have to speak to the court personnel, the judges, and get their input and their feelings. So there's some, you know, different hurdles and different avenues to look at, so.
And one of the things that Corey looked at today was, right now, your building uses 112 thermes?
112 kilobtuas per square foot per year, which is about $120,000 to $130,000 of energy for the building. So if we did one-for-one replacements, I would expect to see about the same energy consumption. There isn't a lot of opportunity for energy improvement if we don't have energy recovery or better control capabilities or different systems. If we go in and can make some, do a true retrofit of your systems, I think we could get down into 60 to 70 kilobtu per square foot range or lower. So something like that looks at potentially $40,000 to $50,000 or more in energy savings per year. So it's not something that's going to pay back the cost of doing a major project, but it would be a significant reduction in what you're looking at right now.
So one of the struggles that we're hoping you guys can come up with for help here. GGA did a study a year ago. They want $12.2 million to, some number, over the next five to seven years to do this. When we were running through spitballing if we did a one-for-one replacement with this thing, we're in the six, seven, eight, just rough numbers right now. We're $6,000, $700, $800 million. That puts you at $20 million invested in a building that's still, quite frankly, still has some challenges with it, and even though it's been made better, it still doesn't meet, it doesn't meet your new energy codes. It's still not there. Kevin just shared with me that they just bid 512 bed facility. Prices came back in at $35.7 million, and that was land, parking lot, demolition of a building stuck in there. So when we're starting to talk, you're not a 500-bed facility, you know, but if you did give more beds, and this is more sheriff things, you could look at federal inmates and get, you know, get some revenue there, and you might only be into 25, 25 to 30 million. But if you're putting $20 million in to fix something, and I know it's not an easy question, but the question is, does that make sense or does it start making sense to look toward?
Well, I've been thinking that myself. I've been sitting here listening to some of these numbers and some of the problems that we're looking at. I mean, if sheriff's office knows that if we're going to have to relocate or do something different than, you know, with inmates and such, but I mean, that's absolutely going through my mind is, why don't we look outside the box and figure out the longer term?
All of these plans and all of these studies that we do all reflect back upon the board's quest to get a five- or 10- or 20-year plan for the buildings. Studies like this are laying that groundwork for us. It's not simple, it's not something you can simply jump down and say, here, we need to do this, this, and this. You see how complicated this starts to get.
Well, I'm not trying to lay the blame on any previous board. Do not take it that way, and for the good of the public as well, but it's certainly not our fault, but it is our problem now.
It is, and we still need to do the proper planning for the future, so.
I would say that, you know, there's a lot of good things the county can do with taxpayer money, but this right here is why it's important to go to the brass tacks, what county government does. Because when you came on, Kenny, you talked about having, you know, some sort of budgeted line item for major repairs, just like a savings account, if you will, that would, you know, you'd plan for three years for a major purchase. This is so far beyond that, but it would...
But that's where it's led, unfortunately.
It would seem that if we were to address the jail as it is, that you would almost have to naturally move into cell block on the first floor if they were going to be in the building. I mean, we can't use the old jail here. I don't know where else we would send them all home.
Right now, with the courts underneath the jail, there's other problems that causes. People flood cells, toilets, it floods the courtroom, floods the courtrooms and the judge's office. It'd quite frankly be a lot easier if you got them out of there and into a building. I know that may cause other issues with them. That gives you a lot of space. You know, Kevin was excited, Larry would be super excited if we gave him a pencil and said, hey, plan something for a jail long-term. You're still utilizing four walls, all the columns and everything else. Just got to fix the inside a little bit to make it, it's expensive. Don't get me wrong, I just mean, but it's land and it is usable, you know, 40, we're just wanting some direction so we know what to recommend, whether you want to put, you know, $20 million into an existing facility, if you're telling, giving you a 10-year plan, or whether you want to look at...
And I think, I mean, our intent is to, we wanted to give you an update on where we were and show you the three kind of major options that we were looking at. Number three is construction of new facility and vacating the existing facility, but we're going to sit down with the interested parties, talk through options with them, and try to put up, it's going to be approximate budgets together, but put some budgets together that say for these three options, you know, option one is at $4.5 million, $5 million, somewhere in that range, and then we'll identify the pros and cons to each logistical issues that we foresee based on those reviews with the interested parties and try to make sure that we're giving you the right information. I just don't like giving you a study that doesn't provide a good path.
So we will have another swipe at this one.
Oh, yeah.
One of our former numbers, because my concern about saying, well, if we just need to find another place for the courts is that's easier said than done.
Yeah.
Right? And then, you know, floating a bond issue is really easier said than done, and I think we've, we have moved the ball significantly downfield by not having Prairie Hills, by moving the kitchen over here and being in the same facility, by upgrading the sheriff's offices. You know, I do think that there's things that we are, you know, we've moved 20 yards downfield. Is it all the way? No, but I think that there are things where we can, you know...
The good news to the sheriff's office, even under the original talk, I mean, you still need a jail in that area, which that's been solid beautifully for. The kitchen is still functional no matter what the space looks like, you know.
Right, which is a key to closing Prairie Hills, the new training site, so.
You haven't built anything yet to the jail that has to, that you're backing up, which is, you guys should be commended for by planning ahead of time, you know, that you're not backing up anything, nothing that we're talking about today is actually undoing something that you just got.
Well, and like you mentioned, everything is just reaching the end of its natural life and it landed on our shift.
Lucky you.
So, yeah. Any other questions for Corey?
What would happen if one of the air handlers just failed?
So the things that are going to typically fail on an air handler would be your motors, belts. Belts are easy, right? You can have those repaired within an hour or two typically. You've probably got extra belts for everything. A motor, maybe hours or a day or two.
Maybe a day at the most.
Yeah, worst case. I mean, we're not talking huge motors. This isn't something you're going to have to have shipped in. The biggest concern would be if you had a coil failure, if you had your cooling coil rupture.
That's a big problem.
Potentially, it could be something that could be temporarily, you know, soldered or repaired, raised, repaired to a point that it can operate temporarily. Depends on how it would fail. I mean, coils don't fail catastrophically that frequently. That's not something that is, I don't lose a lot of sleep over at night about that, if something happens, in which case we can probably move less ventilation air or find another way around it, but I don't think you're going to see catastrophic failures. What you're going to see is the continued degradation of the casing of the unit and eventually a lot more air leakage, and then as it leaks more air, you can try to patch it, but you don't get that air to the areas you're trying to condition. You're wasting a lot of energy. Drain pans can fail over time, so condensate drains, that sort of thing.
Let's just hope it sticks with Elton Motors.
Most everything that you have for air handlers, there's probably replacement parts, even coils. We can get two-piece coils, we can get some things to give replacements. You just might be talking 68 weeks, it could be down. I mean, you could be talking longer time. Same thing with your boiler and chiller, if those go. Again, you have one backup, so hopefully that's good unless they both, like last year, they both, neither one would fire, so that was, so when you, one's redundant and they both don't work, it's not very redundant anymore.
Well, I'd like to think we got the big picture here. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sorry to hear so much bad news.
Noticed our finance guy left.
Building Services Item B, motion to transfer responsibility for all vendor fees and/or services.
Over the past several years, the Building Services Department has been paying some fees for consumables, I call them, or services from other departments, and I'd like to transfer the responsibility of those fees and/or services to the correct parties. We have a couple of different areas. One is the attorney's office here in the courthouse. Building Services has been paying and handling invoices for their bottled water. The other one is in the Trosperhoyt Juvenile Detention, or, excuse me, Juvenile Court area on second floor. We've been paying a monthly rental fee for a reverse osmosis system in a sink. These are just items that were recently discovered by our new Building Services person, and so I would like to transfer these services, costs, invoicing, and all associated items with these back to the parties that they really belong to. Not sure how Building Services started paying them or when or why.
How much do you think this is adding up to, Kenny, or do you know how much it's adding up to?
I don't. I'd have to look back in the records and see how much it's adding up to. Monthly, I'm guessing it's in the area of probably $60 or so.
Did you buy a filtration system with third-party treatment?
To answer your question, I don't know why they need a filtration system. I don't think there's anything wrong with any of the tap water we have anywhere else in the building at Trosperhoyt. In the courthouse here, there are, you know, there are several areas in the county that have bottled water, prefer bottled water, but most of those areas are paying for their own water and their own service. I'm not sure why Building Services...
So this will make it consistent with everybody else? These are outliers? Am I hearing you correctly?
These are outliers, yes.
So I, I motion to transfer responsibility for all vendor fees to the responsible parties?
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt.
They need to move the company.
If they want to pay for it, they can have it.
I'll let you deal with the parties on that.
Next January, I might come to that. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes 5 to 0.
Thank you.
Secondary roads. Thanks for your patience. Approve final pay voucher for Project (127) PCC Pavement Replacement on County Route K25.
Pretty much sums it up. It's been completed for a while now, but it had to get out through both the state and the federal systems, so it just took a little bit to get to this point, but Mark would like a motion to approve.
Happy with the work?
I think everyone is.
Okay. Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. Further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes 5 to 0. Item B, consideration of award for Project 132.
Yep, that's a new bridge that's going to go in on Highway 20, just, oh, old Highway 20, just north of Lawton. Dixon Construction came in at the low bid in the letting at $1,000,552. The bids, there were three bidders, and the bids ranged between them and 1.3 million, so.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt, to award Project Number 132. Further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes 5 to 0. Reports on committee meetings. Anybody? We have a, thanks, Corey. We have a second round of citizen concerns. Gary, did you have anything for us?
I had to do that briefly.
I wish you had known first.
No.
Very well, we're plenty of emergency services. Just wanted to stop by and thank the board and update you. We started our rotating 24-hour shifts this morning with two people, one of them being a paramedic. So from here forward, we're thinking we can cover 95% of the time with two people, one of them being a paramedic, out of climbing hills. So we're online, and I just wanted to stop by on behalf of the association, the MS Association, the folks out in the rural areas, tell the board thank you for your support, and we got it done. Got some really good employees. Got some really good, we got some really good picks, so real happy with the caliber of the applicants. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Anybody else with citizen concerns? Do we have any board concerns, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not to open up an entire agenda item, so to speak, but I do think at some point, you know, with the current media coverage of homelessness, Supervisor Hung and I attended the detox center discussion, and I do think that, not necessarily saying that the county ought to take the lead, but I think that we should continually be a part of the discussions of smart, effective database strategies that combine some of what we heard, whether that's compassion or multiple diagnoses and the disparity, especially between our Native American population and the high numbers of intoxication-related arrests. So just wanted to throw that out there. Initially, was going to put forward an agenda item, but just thought I'd bring that up as something that, you know, if we can participate and cooperate in the IJR or on an expo center, and I think have had very good cooperation with the city and others, I don't see why we can't do so on this. we can't do so on this issue. So just thought I'd throw that out there as a board concern.
Kind of like to see that under mental health.
And I think that certainly has an aspect and a component of that, definitely.
I think clarity of the legislation proposed to Congressman King is a big part of that on behalf of the tribes, and if the county can help with supplying any other data, that's great. But it seemed like from that meeting that Congressman King was very willing to run with whatever he was given, he just was waiting for something, so.
Anything else? Any other board concerns?
We had a, we had a discussion on insurance the other day with a carrier, looking at an umbrella plan. I don't know, they've got a proposal coming out at a certain point or.
I think just exploring different options as far as, and I think I mentioned earlier that we were looking at insurance coming due in January as far as what we're currently paying, and so exploring what some different options may be. And if we have adequate coverage, there's different consultants who can look at, in addition to Gallagher, others that can identify if we have any gaps. So it's something that I think we'll explore.
Insurance you're talking about, I mean?
Anything from our building's property, including, I think we upped our coverage on this particular building from like 49, 67.
You're not talking about medical insurance or employee or anything? Okay, that's, when you say insurance, that's a big word.
Right, right.
Hey, wait a minute.
Kind of his property insurance.
Okay, there you go.
Simcoe on Thursday, Rocky, were you going to be able to go to that one?
Yes.
Thank you.
I guess I did not reply all, did I? Anything else? I guess I'm going to put it out there because I'm trying to figure out exactly what we're doing with the Ag Expo Center when we agreed to X amount of money, and now the thing is one, lost its name, or has a potential to lose its name. I understand one of the big underwriters has talked about backing out of it, Baumgartz. And since it's valued at less than, or they're projecting it to be less than the original amount that we agreed to, I wonder if it would be wise to reevaluate where we're at with that. Dennis, do you have any information? Have you heard anything on whether they're planning on starting digging on anything or?
The only thing I've asked when I've talked to the finance director over there is that they're all intending to do it before July first of next year. You know, there's question marks, you know, that I heard the news of here, somebody saying it's going to start next spring and, you know, 15. There's full intent, I think, of starting this calendar year. Financing's a big issue.
Well.
It was at the beginning and is still a real issue.
I don't know what we can do, I don't know what our options are, but we agreed to X amount for a fixed amount on what they're projected.
We agreed to $15 million over 10 years, $150,000 a year. We did delay it.
You know, not $15 million.
$1.5 million.
Thank you.
Yes.
Not the same.
We fund a whole thing. $1.5 million.
Right. And I guess that's part of my concern is it's, now it's valued at less and I don't know, I'm just questioning whether we should be invested in it that deeply when the plan has changed.
I think, I do think it would be helpful to have the full comprehensive plan at this point presented to the board with a chance for dialogue with, whether it's Bob Hadmore or Matt Salvatore, where we could get some granularity on where this is because what happened in some respects is that, and this almost always happens, right? When you get architects involved and others, the size and scope started to grow and the projects became bigger, bigger, and bigger, and now it's little down to something that is probably closer to the original starting position. And so whether it's actually gone down or just come back around to where it probably should have been at the beginning, I do agree, though, that we should get a little more specificity.
Considering it's an egg center with no egg involved.
Yeah.
Could still have eggs, mostly equestrians.
Yeah, but they've taken a big part of that.
Well, we seem to have gone the other way with the move to provide more upfront funding.
Well, I think we're still at the scheduled 10-year, you know, are you talking about the financing?
Yeah, because if we want to adjust anything, if we've front-loaded it, so to speak, I mean, the board didn't seem to have any concerns then with all of the changes that were somewhat known at that point, to be fair.
Now, we have a budget for the next 10 years. We just pushed it back one year because they were still trying to get things together. We were supposed to give $150,000 this year, but the board, and they agreed to just push it back one year to this year, we start giving them money this year.
Right, that's not what I'm talking about, but.
Right. And they probably will be coming back to the board for what they call bank-qualified loans, where we do 501(c)(3), we do 10 million a year where they get special benefits such as tax exempt.
10 million a year? 10 million a year?
10 million a year, calendar year. Yep. And we haven't done any. Last year, we didn't do any, and this year, there's no plan to do any yet. So they'll probably be back maybe two phases. But what they need, and I can see their point, is they need money upfront to pay these contractors the next two years or a year to build it. So they have to have money upfront, which means they have to get a loan. As donations all come in over a 10-year period, after 10 years, the donation is done, then they have to recycle, try to get donations again, or a place has to become self-sufficient to pay the loan. It's doable, it's just when.
All right. Any other board concerns?